Call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare March first, two thousand twenty-four as Athletic Trainer Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. And on all favor, pose and that is carried. Thank you.
Lady Clark, on behalf of the Board of Education in the North Syracuse Central School District, we want to thank you for all the things that you do for our families and our athletes. Thank you very much.
Next, we have School Social Worker Appreciation Day. Throughout our school buildings, school social workers have had an impact on the district's students and families. And they have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School social workers of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. By honor to the school social workers of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfalia, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School, half of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four as schools. Crabtree, second, from Mr. Marizio. Great seeing none, all in favor, pose and that is carried. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call up Mr. Clark for our recognition of the North Syracuse Central schools teams competing at the Micron Robotics Event at the MOST on January twenty-seventh, so Mr. Clark, is he here? He is.
One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did is recognize our students and our families because of their hard work and dedication to technology. And we felt that the board meeting would be a wonderful place to make sure that we recognized not only the students, but the families and the coaches all involved. Mr. Clark is our Director of Technology for the district, and he's been working tirelessly on many things, and I think right now he works part-time for Micron. But we want to make sure that our students and our families have opportunities as they continue to move forward, and this is just the start. We wanted to make sure. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to recognize the three coaches, and then we'll recognize the students, and we'll have the students come up, and they can say their name and what school they're from.
So, coaches, would you like to come up and introduce yourselves first, and then bring your students up? So the event that we're recognizing was a partnership between the MOST and Micron. And so I'm gonna let the coaches that were there explain the event a little bit and bring their students up.
Hi, my name is Colleen O'Connor, and I coordinate with Mr. Noel, the after-school STEM program. And the competition was a use of microprocessors and circuitry to, that the kids programmed to perform a specific task that was to benefit someone with disabilities. Our team did a machine that would help recognize the color so they could know whether they got Cool Ranch Doritos or regular Doritos, among other things.
And I'm Mr. Bacon from Gillette Road, and we had two teams go. One of our teams came up with an idea to have those who are having some mental health issues, kind of bad feelings and so forth, they had a way to get positive affirmations. And the second team was working on, again, with microprocessors and sensors, to help somebody that was deaf able to cross the street and navigate traffic.
I'm Mr. Noel, Brian Noel. As I said, I helped Mrs. O'Connor with the STEM program at Roxboro Road Middle School. This time, we'll call up the members of the Roxboro team to start with, so we'll start with Ian Cobal. Hey, Boylan, I mispronounced the name. Okay, Lucas, okay, sorry. Yes, we're gonna do it in alphabetical order. Juliette DeSalle. Dinah Thales.
From Gillette Road, we had Ella Besmer. Addison Daz. Peyton Johnson. Bruce Luitis. Lily Rivette. Evelyn Riley. And Belenapa.
We want to give all of our participants a round of applause, and I think what we'd like to do, if we can get everyone into the lobby where we can get a group picture. But again, just give them a round of applause for their work and their effort. And file out into the lobby.
Yeah, we're ready. Next, we have our presentation for the Unified Clubs. Right? Come on in, you're, you're, yep, we're all ready for you, sorry.
Press the button on that, if it goes green, no, on the mic, is it green?
All right. So I'm gonna introduce very quickly everybody that we have here from our Unified Group. So we have Tyler Piajanini down here, wave Tyler, say hi. We have Nadia and Isaiah Hudson, Audrey Halpin, and Mikey Degroot, Aaron Boosie, Rachel Rowe, Joey Koala, and Emma Hall. They're all part of our Unified Group. I'm gonna have Mikey talk a little bit through our presentation, and I'll talk a little bit after that. My name is Eric Smith, I'm the coordinator of us all.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for having us here today and hosting us at this event. This is my first year in the Unified Club, and it's just something I really enjoy because I feel like I'm becoming something. I'm just part of something that's bigger than myself, and I think it means a lot to us partners who are involved and just every, every one of the kids involved in it. So it's just something that I've really been enjoying recently. So our mission is to support students of all abilities, fostering relationships, and teaching one another that we're not so different after all. We want to support and promote our Unified Club, which includes basketball and bowling, and we want to make CNS a more inclusive place. The club meets more than once a month, or once a month or more, and we're always just looking forward to inviting new people and having new members. And I can just say, from a personal standpoint, it's just been a lot of fun to be involved in that, so. What are Unified Sports? They just combine students with partners and students with and without intellectual disabilities working together just on the same sport, trying to help win games, work together against other local schools. And Unified Sports are recognized as an official program of the NYSPHSA. So the Unified Sports at CNS, they offer bowling and basketball, and the hope is just to add more sports in the fall so we can have sports throughout the year, just throughout the seasons, so.
Awesome, thank you, Mikey. A couple of things on that that he touched on is that, as you can see, the emblem in the middle, the Unified Sports is also with partnership with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association and Special Olympics, so they're, they're working together. The Unified Sports are, I guess, for lesser terms, legitimate sports, and the basketball teams that are playing in sectionals now, a unified basketball team and the unified bowling team that's happening now are legitimized sports. They just don't compete for sectional championships, but we play local schools. The Unified Bowling has their first match tomorrow at four o'clock at Strike and Spare, so hopefully we'll have some support out there. But is, is the definition, it's kind of a medical definition, Unified Sports combines students with and without intellectual disabilities. And the students with intellectual disabilities are athletes, and the students without are partners. But we like to look at it as just people from all abilities. We all have disabilities. I have a disability, and I can't sing, and I can't draw, and so everybody has something that we're not very good at. But these kids are amazing, our athletes and our partners. We're gonna have a couple of videos in a minute, but just to touch on, you know, everything that goes through here, we talk about education, we talk about getting better, the STEM kids, amazing stuff that they're doing, and that's, for me, a pillar that rises people up throughout society. But the foundation for me is what these kids are, and it has nothing to do with education. It has to do with the amazing people that they are. And as a coach and as a teacher, my ultimate goal is to develop good people, great people. That's the foundation of life, and the foundation of that they are the most pleasant, the most well-mannered, the more caring people that you'll ever meet at CNS. And that's the amazing part to it all for me. You show up every single day, and I think I'm pretty good with remembering people's names, but when it comes down to this, and they'll remember every single person's name the first day, our athletes do, amazing stuff that they do, it's pretty cool. All right, so I'll continue, there's a couple of videos. I don't know. I don't know if I can click them from here.
I like hanging out with friends. My favorite Unified Sport is basketball, I'm really good at it all the time.
And my favorite thing about Unified Club is hanging out with my PFF Audrey and with Rachel and with Lexi and Gabby and, and, and all my friends. Especially, and I, my favorite sport is doing basketball and bowling.
And the cool part about what Isaiah was saying at the end, all of those names that he mentioned were all partners on the team, were all kids that, without Unified, probably wouldn't have an opportunity to have gotten to meet them. And that's been the cool part about Unified, is the connections that they're able to make.
Hi, my name is Sophia, and Unified Bowling is awesome and amazing here.
And if, if you watch that video and you don't smile, then you definitely need to come to a Unified event. Cause they, they will make you smile, and you'll laugh the entire time. And Sophia has endless energy.
I like hanging out.
That's alright. And we have two more.
Has affected our family.
I think we got two of them going on there at once.
For both of my children to be a part of. And I am extremely grateful to the teacher, staff, administration for allowing this opportunity to be in our school. I think that there are two things that give people the drive to move forward and to be successful. And those are hope and belonging. And I think what Unified Sports has done, Unified Club has done, is given both of my children a sense of belonging in their community, feeling as if they're seen, heard, and are important. And also hope, hope that they can be a part of a team, hope that they can be standing alongside their typical peers and feel successful. It's a beautiful experience to be a parent, sitting there watching your child compete and play and be a part of a team. It has profoundly affected my children and our family and the friends that come and support my children at these games. So I thank you, and I hope that we can continue to do this in the name of inclusion and celebration of people of all abilities.
So, before you start the next one, I think the key there, and that was Isaiah and Nadia's mom talking, the key to me is belonging, is that this has brought a sense of belonging to kids that they wouldn't have had otherwise. And special education kids from, at CNS, kind of go about their own business and their own part of the school, but there hasn't been able, opportunities to interact with the general education population. And COVID put a big stop to that, there was a lot of that before. But kids came back and we learned in talking to the partners, that they didn't realize that they could go down and hang out with these kids in their study hall and make these connections. So, that's really what we're trying to do, is, is make those connections with people, meet people that you normally wouldn't have an opportunity to meet. CNS is such a huge school, and I think that's one of the struggles that probably everybody here sees, is that you, kids can go there, they can graduate, and they, there's people that they could see at graduation, they go, you, I don't have clue who you are. And I grew up in a small school, so I didn't have that experience, but this provides an opportunity for kids to meet kids that they wouldn't have ever had the opportunity to do before, and make these connections, lifelong connections. Our athletes, if you are able to come to one of our events, a bowling event, if they get a strike, it's a first-time experience every time. You know, if they go to basketball and they make a basket, you know, it's a first-time experience every single time. The reaction that you get is, is, if you remember back when we had firsts and accomplished those firsts, it kind of dulls from there, it doesn't dull with them, and it doesn't dull with us in watching it. And that's the cool part. So we'll watch the last video. Oh no, that's fine. Well, I think with that one, it worked out well, cause Mikey explained already kind of what he said on that, that it's, it's something that's bigger than himself with this. So, you know, going forward, as I said, tomorrow is our first Unified Bowling Event. Coach Jones, back here in the, in the background, she helps me out with basketball, and she's the bowling coach. So you'll see some of these experiences if you're able to come when basketball season rolls around. We, in April, one of the biggest things, and I wanted to do it tonight, but I said it not to, is to have a dance party. So at halftime, we put on some music and the kids go out to dance. So, I know you probably didn't bring your dancing shoes, so we weren't gonna do that today. But it's an opportunity to see these kids just having fun. And every basket they make is their first basket, it's a first for them. They wake up talking about it in the morning. And the last thing I'll leave is that I got into, involved with Unified, A, cause I have a son that has special needs, so a lot of times you need something to, to put you into that place. And I was lucky enough to have my son give me that gift to be able to get involved with us. You know, I'm gonna help people out. And the one thing I realized early on is that I'm not helping anybody out, I'm taking so much more from it. So you'll go thinking that you're helping people, and, and I think all the partners would say that, that they are getting so much more out of it. Learning, and I learn so much more every single day from all of these wonderful people, from the athletes and the partners. And, and I know that they're, they're gonna do amazing things because they have that foundation, that foundation of an amazing heart, of amazing sense of belonging, they work hard at everything that they do. And their education is gonna help them get up, but that foundation is phenomenal to see. So we thank you very much for allowing us to present. Hopefully, you know, in the future, I'm looking to start some Unified Physical Education class, I'm a phys ed teacher, so I wanted to, to expand that in the physical education realm, maybe get a third sport to put in. So there's many more opportunities for them to be involved with, so the, the thought is to grow, to grow Unified as much as possible. So thank you very much.
I, I just wanted to say that I, I have heard about this before, and I think it's a wonderful idea. And I do think that there definitely needs to be much more of a bridge between what they call special education and normal education individuals. I definitely, I see it a lot in the schools, and I, I just feel like the, the separation kind of takes away a lot of opportunity and potential mutual benefit for both parties. And I think that this is a great first big step of bringing that back. And I'd just like to see it getting even more developed moving forward, and yeah, thank you for everything you do.
Of course. Hello, so Mr. Keegan is up next for the briefing of the budget.
Well, good evening, folks, it's a tough act to follow when you have robotics and Unified Sports, both amazing kids, amazing programs. We're very lucky here at North Syracuse to have those. So I just want to start with some, you know, more celebration. If you, if you look at our marching band, two consecutive years, outstanding performance. And tonight, I think the board's gonna be receiving a anonymous gift for, that'll support marching band, very generous gift, and so that's just one of the items we wanted to celebrate. But tonight, we're gonna talk about some considerations that are impacting the 24-25 budget. We'll look at our estimated revenues, our tax cap calculation, our initial expenses. And I want to explain that for a minute, initial expenses, what that means is, this snapshot of the budget we're looking at is kind of business as usual. It's everything we know about, if we did everything we did last year, and we did it this year, and with a few things we've learned and know about, we've incorporated that into the budget. And so, we call it our initial expenses because it's probably not gonna be where we're gonna land. You know, we've got, we've got till April 17th to refine the budget and ask for your approval, and we've got a lot of work to do, as you'll see. I'm only putting federal stimulus on here because it's, it's an important thing to just remember that COVID's over, and so CURSA and ARP funding is over, and we'll talk more about that. We're gonna talk about vehicles for next year, fund balance and reserves, the vote and election information, and then just the budget process timeline. So, considerations, first, first and foremost, when we look at putting our business plan together, we look at our, our strategic plan. You know, we look at this document, that five-year plan, that so many people worked very hard putting together, and we, we look at it because we want to make sure that the resources we're deploying are aligned with the district's strategic mission and goals. And so, so that's an important point. We recognize, like other districts in upstate New York, that our enrollment is declining. But I think that it's important to note that the degree of difficulty for our teachers is, is actually increasing. We have a larger number of special needs students, they represent a, or students with special needs, they represent a greater percentage of our population. We've talked a lot about the social, emotional needs of our students. And we still have academic gaps as a result of COVID. And so, I, I think we often will say, oh, the enrollment's declining, the budget should go down. But the reality of it is, our teachers, our administrators are, are finding that the job, the degree of difficulty has certainly increased. I mentioned already our federal stimulus aid ending. The labor market's tight, and so it really makes us think about the hiring process and the retention process, and really looking at how do we navigate this tight job market so that North Syracuse continues to hire and retain the best, best people, and, and most importantly, our teachers and our classrooms. This year, we've got numerous labor contracts that are, will be negotiated. And so those new rates will need to be reflected in our final budget that you folks will approve in April. So we're gonna have to do the best we can to make good estimates of that if those contracts are not finally negotiated. And then, finally, we're operating in an inflationary environment. And I'm gonna talk more about this in detail, but, you know, we've lived under this tax cap since 2012. And for most of the years, we really haven't had to deal with inflation. But now we're working on our third budget, where inflation has been greater than 2%, and it's, it's certainly presenting some challenges. So those are some of the things we considered as we, as we pulled this budget together. On the revenue side, you know, a couple, I want to hit a couple of points here, general state aid. It's just disappointing that North Syracuse was underfunded for 16 years, not getting its fair share of foundation aid. In the 23-24 school year, the year we're in right now, we received, for the first time ever since foundation aid was developed in 2006-7, we received our full foundation aid. The governor's current proposal underfunds us by $887,000. To put that in perspective, the 16 years we did not get fully funded created a revenue shortfall of $190 million over that same period. So, we're hoping that in the legislative process, the legislature and the governor will work together, at least fully fund our foundation aid, that would mean $887,000 for us. The other thing that people are probably wondering about, and I'm gonna show you some numbers in a minute, building aid, we've got a lot, the voters have, have approved a number of projects, we get a lot of projects underway. But I just want to remind people that we don't actually start to collect the building aid until we complete the projects and we file our final cost report. So, very nominal increase in building aid this year, but that aid will come as, as the projects are completed. Real property taxes, so we're, we've, we've calculated our school tax levy at the cap. And I, I just want to point out again that inflation for the 12-month period ended January was 3.1%. But the allowable levy growth factor, that's the component of the tax cap that, that addresses inflation, will only go up 2%. And so that's the case for the 24-25 school year. In '22, inflation was 8%, and for the, and '21, it was 4.7%. So we, we've been dealing with years of inflation, and the cost of operating a school district has increased significantly, and we've not been able to pass those increases on to the taxpayers. And then, once again, I'll probably mention this a dozen more times, so forgive me, we, we will not have the federal stimulus aid. ARP this year funded $2.7 million of expenses. Looking at revenues, you can see that our general state aid is up, up about a million six or 1.83%. Again, that is, that is $887,000 less than the full funding amount. Nominal increase in pilots, I'll mention this again later, but it's worth mentioning now, that the pilot agreement that's been so widely talked about for Micron is not included here. We, that has not been finalized, and nor do we expect that it'll impact our budget this year. Our interest is up, interest rates are up, and our treasurer, Vince Love, and the team have done a really good job of investing the district's funds, and so we've increased our budget accordingly. Medicaid is up, we, we are very fortunate to work closely with our BOCs. They do our Medicaid billing for us, and they've done an outstanding job, and, and we've seen a steady increase in our Medicaid billing as we've, we've collected more of those dollars, as our, as our organization provides Medicaid services to students. Slight increase in other revenues, and you might wonder like, what the heck is other revenues? Well, you know, we do a lot of business with BOCs, and you'll see that in the budget coming up. But, one of the things that's great about BOCs is, BOCs is not allowed to keep any of our money that isn't spent. Unlike us, we get to build a fund balance, BOCs is not allowed to do that. So, if we sign up for services with BOCs, and for some reason, we don't partake in that service, as long as they haven't paid bills to support that service, they refund us the money in the following year, at the end of the year. So, we're fortunate that we've, we've attempted to be very, we sign up for BOCs services, and if we don't need them, we don't use them, and we've been getting some BOCs refunds, and our treasurer has reflected that in these revenues. Building aid, as I mentioned earlier, up very nominally, and the tax levy, I've got a slide to talk about that. But we're looking at a budget that really requires revenues of $214 million, almost $215 million. But I want to point out that, that second-to-last line in the slide, we currently have a $5.6 million deficit. Now, it's something to be very concerned about, but I also don't, it's not something to panic about. There's many, I've been here 12 years, this is my 13th budget cycle, and there've been many years where we've started the process with a deficit that we've had to work through. And I think this year, because of the governor's proposal on foundation aid, and because of the loss in, in federal programming aid, the ARP money in particular, where we're seeing this deficit. So, the, the two things that you take, take away from this slide, the big green piece, that's our tax levy. So 49.3% of our revenues come from the tax levy, 41.9, almost 42% come from general state aid. So we're very dependent on state aid and the local tax levy. So let's talk about the local tax levy. We go through a calculation, this is a preliminary calculation, it's gotta be filed with the governor's office on March 1st, which we'll do. But it, but it might change a little bit between now and the time the budget's completed. This tax levy calculation is the tax cap calculation that people refer to as the 2% tax cap. And that allowable levy growth factor, that line right in the middle, that's where we increase the levy by 2%. And so, this calculation follows the, the formula that the state has outlined, and it takes into consideration pilots, so let's use, again, Micron for an example. When the Micron pilot ultimately comes through, what'll happen is, our revenues will go up by the amount of the pilot, and we'll lower the tax levy by the amount of the pilot. So even though we'll get a pilot payment from Micron, our revenues as a district won't go up. And so what you're seeing, when you see pilot revenues '23-24 and pilot revenues '24-25, all it's doing is looking at the change. And as you can see, our pilot revenues went up, and that actually pushed the tax levy down slightly. The tax levy for capital, that's all those capital projects over the years that the voters approved, where we said in the referendum, "And the local share will be." That's the local share of those tax levies. So, we took a big bump last year, you might remember, our tax levy bumped up, we did 3.22%. Well, part of that was because Bear Road came online, right? And we had, so we had the increase with Bear Road. Bear Road's already baked in there, so you'll see a very small increase relating to the local share of, of projects, capital projects. And then there's this thing called other exclusions. And so when the TRS, the retirement costs for TRS and ERS, that's the teacher's retirement system and their employees' retirement system, when those go up, if they go up more than two percentage points in terms of rate, and I want to put that in perspective, the teachers right now, it's 10.02%, I think that's the rate. If that went to 12% or a 20% increase in that cost, anything over 20% increase in the cost, we could pass on to the taxpayers. In this particular case, TRS went up very nominally, went up, I think, .26, maybe a quarter of a point. The ERS though, went up over two points in terms of rate. I think the rate is actually over 20%. And so we were able to adjust our tax levy and pass on $26,000 to the taxpayers. That's a drop in the bucket, but that's how the formula works. So right now, we're looking at a tax levy at the cap with an increase of about 2.98%. And if you look at that on a, for a $100,000 home before STAR, it's about a $55 increase in the tax for that home. So now we look at this thing, these assessments and boy, I'll tell you, with the property values increasing as much as they have all around the country, and if you look at it here in upstate New York, even though the towns of Cicero and Salina are full value towns, they are not at their full value. Assessors just haven't been able to keep up with assessments. So for example, a house in Cicero that's worth $100,000 is only assessed at $72,000. And if you look at the town of Salina, it's about $89,000 for a $100,000 home. Clay has never been a full value assessed town. So $100,000 home in Clay is only worth, is only assessed for $2,980, which is really weird. But if you look at the, the third line down, the estimated school tax rate, the rates, as you can see, Clay's rate is $638 per thousand. But at the end of the day, for a $100,000 home, the tax increase over the prior year will be about $55 or about $4.59 a month increase. Another celebration here, you, we, they were here recently at a board meeting talking about esports and this is our esports team and again, we're just, we're lucky to have such talented kids in the district that are able to do so well in this new extracurricular activity. Micron impact, I mentioned this a moment ago about the pilot and I, I think it's important. I was kind of surprised about this. So as you probably know, the federal government's made available $50 billion to put a bunch of programs together that is called the CHIPS Act and that's to support the manufacturing of, of chips in the United States. But it's a huge process to actually give that money away. They just made their first award to Global Foundries, which is in Albany, and I think it's a $1.5 billion award. So they haven't, they haven't made the awards yet and so while, you know, while Micron's going to receive their CHIPS Act money, since that hasn't happened yet, a lot, you know, the pilots haven't been finalized and things like that. So that's why I mentioned that Micron, the impact of Micron on our finances, it will not, it will not impact us in the 24-25 school year. But we're so lucky, you know, Dan joked that Jason Clark's working part-time for, for Micron. Micron has been very generous, they've been a great partner and things like our chip camps and, and the ability for our, our kids to participate in Micron-sponsored events has been really great. And, and Dan, along with the team of folks, are going to head down to Manassas, Virginia to, to visit their facility, along with a number of other central New York educators. Dan, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, but...
Yes, there's a team that's going from 10 component districts from BOSI's, will be heading down in March 27th and 28th down to Manassas. Micron will be hosting us and giving us a sample of what it looks like to set up programs for school districts. And so I know North Syracuse, Liverpool, ESM, Baldenville, all heading down during that time, the end of this month. So we'll be able to bring back some critical information as far as next steps and what we want to look to do for programming.
And here's our picture of chip camp, the kids got to spend a day at Cornell, those were our kids, at chip camp during the day when they were at Cornell, a three-day camp. And like I said, they spent one day at Cornell. And then this was the students that we just recognized with the Micron Robotics Challenge. Some of these kids were here tonight. Let's switch to the expenditure side. So we've talked a lot about revenues, things that impact revenues. The first one I want to touch base on is, is our health benefits. North Syracuse Central School District has done an outstanding job managing rising healthcare costs. We're a self-insured plan, we're a large plan and we've got a health oversight committee and we work very closely with our vendors and, and partners to manage our healthcare costs. But we've seen, as everybody in the country has, the last two years, we've seen some pretty significant increases. Right now, the latest projection is that we're going to see an 11% increase in our medical, which is, which is a lot. And so that's what's in the plan now. We'll look at this three more times, we'll have an analysis done by outside third party and they'll give us some more firm numbers before you folks have to finalize or, or adopt the budget. I mentioned TRS, their rate is 10.02%. It's just a, an increase of just over a quarter of a point. The ERS salaries, their rate went up 2.1%. And so, you know, that, that's, that's impacted in our budget this year. Salaries and wages, I already mentioned that a number of our contracts are up for negotiation. Fuel's another one that's worth, it's a big expense for us. We run, you know, we have 150 buses on the road and so, you know, it's been volatile over the past year and we've adjusted our, our budget to reflect current pricing. And then energy costs, you may remember that the, the North Syracuse Central School District participates in a thing called the New York State Municipal Energy Consortium. And that consortium basically, that can, that consortium basically negotiates energy rates, electric and gas, for a large number of municipalities. And we are just finishing our three, a three-year contract that ends in May of '24. So we're working with the consultants and, you know, I, I originally, honestly, we did extremely well in the last cycle. I was nervous that this would have a dramatic negative impact on our budget, but the early reports from the consultant are that our rates should not increase too much in this next cycle and I'll be keeping you posted on that as we get closer to the award. Expenditures. So I want to just start by saying, our salaries are not going to go up 6.69%. But what you're seeing there is that we took the $2.27 million in salaries and expenditures that were covered by ARP and we added it to our 23-24 budget. I'm sorry, our 20, I should say 24-25, I apologize, that 24-25 budget in order to make the assumption initially that everything we're doing, we'll do again next year. We, we're going to have to revisit that and look at that when we know better about our revenues. The same thing with benefits. You might say, hey, Don, you just told us healthcare was going up 11%. It is, but, but that's only the health piece. There's a lot of other things in there. For example, FICA is a component of it, unemployment, disability and a number of other things fit into there. So that's brought the, brought the average down. Debt service, very nominal increase, again, we're doing a lot of projects, but where, but until they're complete, we basically bridge finance those loans. So when we're doing construction, we, we borrow some money and we, we do the construction, but we don't permanently finance it. It's like you don't take your mortgage out until after you got the house built. That's kind of what we're doing. So nominal increase in, in our, in our debt service. Some increases in contractual, that's more related to inflation, honestly. Continued increase, and continued increases in BOSI's programming. We, you know, BOSI's offers a lot of great services, we've been able to take advantage of them. We get BOSI's aid in the subsequent year and it just provides opportunities for our kids that we couldn't otherwise provide without BOSI's. Nominal increase in equipment budget, supplies, both related to primarily inflation. And it looks like, you know, what, what our initial budget is requiring is that $214.9 million of expenditures, despite the fact that we have about $5.6 million less in revenues. So a lot more to come, a lot more work to do there. Again, I show this slide every year. We are a people-based business. There is nothing that we do that is more important than putting an adult in front of a child in terms of education. You guys know that better than I do. And that's why you see the red and the blue sections of the pie being the largest sections. It's, we're a people-based business, that's the best investment we can make is putting adults in front of children. Let's talk about transportation. You might have heard about the zero emissions issues, electric buses, so I want to hit that, hit that first and foremost. So New York State, in their 22-23 budget, set mandates requiring that all new school buses be zero emission by 2027 and that all buses on the road be zero emission by 2035. And that can include electric, it can include hydrogen fuel cell. But at the end of the day, as an industry, this is nothing about North Syracuse, we're probably not on track for that. I, I think the technology's not on track for that. But I want to, I want to be clear, we've talked about this at Cabinet, I, I'm, I'm assuming the board feels the same way. You know, we're committed to the environment, but we're also committed to being fiscally responsible to our local taxpayers. Therefore, we're invest, we're investigating the issues and opportunities closely before we purchase a zero emission bus. So what we've done is we've completed a fleet study. That's where we, we had a company come in that was paid for on our behalf, thankfully. And they've evaluated the feasibility of electric buses for routes. And I might have told you folks this before, but we have 107 home-to-school routes. The current technology today, even if we had all the money in the world, only 40 of those routes can be, can use zero emission buses today or electric buses today. Because that's just where the technology is, the charging ability and, and whatnot. So, but we've done the study, that's important. We've applied for both NICERTA and EPA grants to offset a portion of the cost. Electric buses are really expensive. You know, right now, the latest number is like $465,000 for an electric bus. And so the, the vision we have for kind of getting into this, this electric bus or zero emission bus thing is that we would get enough grants that the cost of the bus to the district would be comparable or roughly comparable to the cost if we bought a gasoline bus. And so we're just not, we're just not there yet. And what we're going to do is, we've kind of said that we're not going to ask the voters to consider an electric bus unless we can significantly offset some of that, you know, that cost. So that's kind of where we are right now. So this next slide, when you see what we're proposing, does not include a zero emission bus at this time, although we're moving forward with grants and, and studies and analysis. What we're saying at this point is that we'd, we, we want to continue with our mission of, of not having too many buses that are over 10 years old. We do have those. The problem with those buses is that they become expensive to maintain. It's, believe it or not, with all assault on our roads, the biggest problems we have are rusting chassis and whatnot. And you, you probably remember this, our buses get inspected twice a year. You have to inspect your car once a year, but we have to go through a pretty rigorous inspection every six months. So with that, we're proposing that we buy two 42-passenger gasoline buses with wheelchair lifts and air conditioning to support our special needs population. And then we buy 10 65-passenger gasoline buses, that's the traditional school bus. And then we'll buy a handful of M&amp;O vehicles as, as part of our process of keeping that fleet fresh and reliable and, and lower cost to operate. So right now, as this stands, it's about $2.84 for a $100,000 home, again, before STAR. We also, as you guys know, we have, we're very blessed to have the Salina Library right there on the Roxborough campus and we're obligated to allow them to include their referendum or their, their budget on our, our ballot. And so we get the, we get a letter from the director every year, which I share with you. They're looking at about a 2% increase or a $10,000 increase in their budget, pretty nominal. And it's, like I said, it's a great asset to the community down at the, down at Roxborough. Let's look at fund balance for a minute. So we finished the year last year with $9.3 million in fund balance. We're about 3.9% of the budget. As you guys might remember, we've had a couple of emergency projects that we've had to do, the new, junior high chiller and fire alarm, the elementary boiler at, at Cicero L. And so with each of those projects, the board has agreed, the voters have approved the use of some fund balance. So we're subtracting that out, that's about $821,000 for all those projects. So that drops our projected fund balance back to, down to about 8.5 million. If we divide that by the 214, that ends up at about 3.96%. So it's a, it's kind of about where we are. The state recommends you have a 4% fund balance, so we're just slightly below that. We'll see how the rest of this school year shakes out as you, you probably remember, we put a spending freeze in place. Often when you put a spending freeze in place, you don't spend the whole budget. And so hopefully we'll get additional funds into our fund balance as, in connection with year-end. Reserves, looking at, looking at reserves, the district has about $22 million, $22.5 million in reserves. And we also have some money in what's called the debt service fund. And so to explain the debt service fund, there's two ways money get in, gets in there. If we, if we complete a construction project under budget, we just can't pocket that money. That money has to go in a debt service fund to be used to pay down debt or for another voter-approved purpose. So say you have a $25 million project and you, and you do it for $23.5 million or $24.5 million and you have $500,000, you can put that in the debt service fund. The other thing that happens is, our, our, our debt, when we raise capital, we actually issue public debt. We issue bonds that, that investors buy. And because we're AAA rated credit, we're really an attractive bond. And depending on the interest rate market, sometimes we sell a bond for more than the face value of the bond. In other words, the interest rate that we're offering is so attractive and the risk is so low that an investor says, "I'll pay more than you asked for that." In other words, I'll accept what effectively it's like, it's like prepaid interest. They're actually giving us some interest upfront. So maybe the bond is a 3% bond, that you're going to make 3% interest, but you're willing to pay a little more, so you're only really going to earn 2.75% interest, but that's still better than the market. But when we get those premiums, we can't just go and spend that on anything we want, we have to put it in the debt service fund. And so that's why that, that money is there. And I only mention that because we've been fortunate to be able to attempt to do some good capital planning with the voters. You might remember in a previous referendum, we asked the voters if we could use that money to offset some of the debt or some of the purchase price of a capital project, which ultimately reduces their debt. And that's kind of the spirit of the debt service fund. Like I beat that one to death, but we've got, we've got good reserves and I think reserves and fund balance are going to be part of our strategy for dealing with our $5.6 million deficit. Voice bowling, section three champions. We've got our calendar, a lot of work to do, as I mentioned. Today's February 26th and we looked at the initial budget. What we're going to do in the month of March, I know this isn't part of the calendar per se, but it's something we did last year and I think it worked out very well. We've asked our directors to come to the first, to the two meetings in March and talk to you about their initiatives. This is, Dan's done a great job this year of, of getting our directors in front of the board, so you've, you've had a chance to kind of dive into the subject areas. But there's just so many initiatives that are happening and so many things that need to happen in connection with the strategic plan, that having our directors come, we'll take two meetings, they'll each give you some highlights on their initiatives and that's going to happen in, in March, that second meeting in March. We're going to try to give you an update on the budget, hopefully we have some better news. They'll give you the final tax cap, we'll, we'll fine-tune that bus proposition and we'll get you to approve that notice of budget hearing and election. We'll, on April 17th, we're hoping the board can adopt the budget. We've got the BOSI's election and budget vote that day, that's a Wednesday. We'll start our presentations to the community with a budget hearing on the, on May 7th and a budget vote on May 21st. Here's our cheerleader, section three champs. And here's the, the usual vote and election. People that are voting north of 41 are going to vote at the Michael J. Bragman Stadium. So instead of Cicero L., we're going to be at the stadium. South of 41, they're going to be here at the district office and, you know, registration information's consistent with what we've done in past years. We really give people a great opportunity to, almost right up to the vote to, to get registered by working with, with our district clerk, Jill Herrera. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. More, more to come. All right, thank you. More, more to come.
Thank you, Don. Moving to the comments from the audience section of the meeting, we have none tonight, so we can move on from that. But as always, we always welcome comments from the public at our meetings, so feel free to sign up if you. Moving on to Board of Education Committee reports, Mr. Thorne.
Thank you. Our next Policy Committee meeting will be tomorrow. It's another virtual Zoom meeting, so hopefully that improves attendance. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
We haven't had a meeting since our last, our last legislative meeting was February 7th, and Dr. Matt Cook from BOSI's went through the Blue Ribbon Commission, which we're all watching with the graduation requirements, thinking of the students that were here tonight, it might affect them. And there's a lot more to go on that. But also, I want you to know, dealing with the budget, as Dan or Don just talked about, I don't know if Xavier's up there, but the Assembly is working separately, and so is, Josh knows this too, and the Senate to come up with their plan, and then they get together and do one. But I can tell you at our last legislative meeting that Al Sterpi, John Mannion, and Pam Hunter, who are our representatives, will not let this governor's budget for education go through. It's just not right. And so we've got three people that are going to really work hard for us in the budget. Our next meeting is March 6th, and we'll look quickly at Don's preliminary budget, but we're going to talk about what we can do for publicity. We want to get, I believe we had 1,800 last year voters, we want at least over 2,000. The more voters we get out there, the better we are. So that's it.
Do you have anything for OCM tonight?
Yes, we had an OCM BOSI's board meeting last Thursday, and first of all, I know Dan's going to talk about the skills. Were you going to talk about skills? No, okay. I want to. So on February 9th, at SUNY Morrisville, they have what is called the Skills USA Competition. So this might be something that you have to construct, all right? They give you the directions to construct it, and you have to do it. We had, from North Syracuse, I'm very happy that Brayden Baysell from Drivers Village, our automotive program, got first place in automobile service technology. We also had first place Kyra Hall, or Kira Hall, New Vision Medical with medical terminology. We had another winner, Emily Rio, New Vision Medical with first aid and CPR. And finally, Oliver Sadler, baking and pastry. So these students now will go on to the state competition. And our own Dan Bowles went last year. He's going to wear sneakers this year. It is going to be during vacation, unfortunately, but it's April 25th from 9:30 to 2:00. And I'm going to say to our student, if you want to go, you got to ride with me. You will, it's amazing. It is an amazing, they take all those state buildings, that you go turn the fair, and they have competition from students from all over the state. It is a great program. Right, Dan? You went, you went last year and. Something that's coming up is the April 4th OCM BOSI's annual meeting, which will be down in Cortland. So all of the superintendents and board members will be invited to a wonderful meal by the students in Cortland. And then I know Don and Dan got to see the budget presentation, and I will make copies of that for you, because you will be voting on that on April 17th. You'll be voting on the BOSI's. And all you vote on is the administrative budget. So I'll give you a paper. Each school district pays a certain amount of money. Because we have more students, we have to put more money into the pot. But I know the two of them liked what they saw last week. There will be four board members up for election. Each school board will vote yes or no on them. I am not up this year. And that's it for BOSI's.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Mr. Bowles.
Okay. My first announcement is we have a celebrity in our midst. North Syracuse High School senior, Thomas Wills, named candidate in Presidential Scholars Program. Thomas, a graduating senior from our high school, has been named a candidate for the 2024 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. Thomas is one of approximately 5,000 students selected from the nearly 3.6 million students expected to graduate from United States high schools in the year 2024. Inclusion in the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program is one of the highest honors bestowed upon graduating high school seniors. Scholars are selected on the basis of superior academic and artistic achievements, leadership qualities, strong character, and involvement in the community and school activities. A distinguished panel of educators will review these submissions and select approximately 600 semifinalists in early April. The Commission on Presidential Scholars, a group of up to 32 eminent citizens appointed by the presidents, will select the finalists. And the U.S. Department of Education will announce the scholars in May. U.S. Presidential Scholars are honored for their accomplishments during the National Recognition Program. And he is one of ours, so that is a lot to be proud of. Other acknowledgements is we've had a lot going on. We had our vacation, but wrestlers that went to states. We had a great weekend for North Star Wrestling. First time ever for CNS to send four wrestlers to states. Finished 17th out of 122 teams. Camden Bembry finished sixth. Kennedy Thomas finished eighth. First time since 1997 to have multiple-place finishers. In basketball, both boys and girls basketball won Friday advancing to the sectional semifinals this Wednesday. Girls play Bishop Ludden at 5:00 PM in Central Square. Boys play RFA at 7:45 at FM High School. Cheerleading, 2024 Section III champs. Good luck this upcoming weekend at states down in Binghamton. Swim and track. Good luck to boy swimmers going to states this weekend in Ithaca and CNS indoor track athletes competing in states this weekend in Long Island. Tomorrow is our first unified bowling match ever, as you heard, at 4:00 PM at Strike and Spare. So you were able to meet our new football coach. And as you can see from all of our programs, including the students that were here with performing for the most and the robotics, there is a lot of things to, to smile about in North Syracuse, and we have a lot of wonderful, talented athletes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Well, he's got his own, he's got his own. Do you have anything? Thomas?
So like Mr. Bowles said, Bowles said, sorry. My bad. Since we just came back from break, there's really not a whole bunch that has changed. But after Mr. Crabtree talks some about BOSI's and also this paper I read about a very successful BOSI student, I just wanted to, for anybody that's watching, to kind of advocate for BOSI's, because I feel like a lot of people, they either see it as something that is limited academically or something that might be too challenging academically. And the real, the reality of it is, is that it's like everything from low to high. So it's basically like a reap what you sow scenario, where if you want to go there and just kind of do like some more basic things, you can do that and get by with it. But also, if you want to take your learning to the next level, there's so many opportunities there for you to do that. So I just wanted to let that be known. And I thought I'd also mention that the food donation program that we have at CNS is projected to start at Gillett Road Middle School, March 6th, with Roxborough Middle School and the junior high following suit. And we also are pending the food donation program. We're pending a partnership with the canteen. Where basically leftover food from the food table that can't be donated to food pantries due to their perishability is going to be transported on the daily to the canteen for teenagers to have during the program. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move into some routine action items here. I'll take the first one, consideration of approval from the minutes from the February 5th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion for that? Mr. Crabtree, second, for Mr. Ludden, all those in favor? unanimous. We can take B, C, and D together. They are classification of placement of students. Do I have a motion to accept those as a group? Mr. Thorne, Mr. Ludden, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And the acknowledgement of the business office reports for December of 2023. Do I have a motion to accept those as presented? Ms. Segrew? Mr. Crabtree? There you go. All those in favor? That's unanimous as well. This discussion action items, Declaration of Marketable and Non-Marketable Surplus. I don't think there's anything crazy in there. Podium and OPA system projector. Do I have a motion to accept those, Mr. Ludden? Herman, all those in favor? Unanimous. We have a couple of gifts. Do I have a motion to accept those gifts as they are presented? We have $5,000 that has been donated to the early education program and $10,000 for the marching band. So we are always grateful for these generous gifts to help move our programs forward. Do I have a motion to accept those gifts? Mark, Amanda, all those in favor? Unanimous. Resolution to grant authorization to OCM BOSI's to enter into the wide area network or the WAN connection between CineRec and the North Syracuse School District. Don, is there anything special about this, just in standard yearly?
A standard multi-year agreement.
Any questions on that? Do I have a motion? Matt, Josh, all those in favor? Unanimous. Recommendation to approve the final 2223 non-resident tuition rates. Any questions on this? Do I have a motion to accept those as they're submitted? Josh, Mark, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Couple of retirements to acknowledge before we move into personnel. Colleen McKilian, a science teacher, retiring with 20 years of service. And Lori Hyde, a bus, a school bus attendant, is retiring with 32.6 years of service. So as always, we wish you a long, happy, and healthy retirement, and thank you for all of your years of service to the school district and educating our community. Do we need a executive session before we enter into personnel A, B, or C? Do I have a motion to accept personnel A as submitted? Mark? Josh, all those in favor? I am going to abstain. Support staff, do I have a motion to accept support staff as submitted? Josh, Mark, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And administrative personnel report, do I have a motion to accept those as submitted? Amanda, Josh, all those in favor? That is unanimous. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one legal issue with no action to follow and five personnel issues with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Mark, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Matt, Josh, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good night.